Alright everybody, let's call this meeting, our regular meeting of the Washto County School District Board of Trustees to order in our new refurbished boardroom. What we're hoping is that this gives better visibility for all of our handouts and so on to the public and allow you to follow along even more with what's going on here in the school district. So, that is certainly our intention, so we're thankful for our staff that did all the work, long, long process, two-year process or so, that at least that started when trustee mayor was the president, but we finally got enough eBay money to pay for it, and that was really important, so we appreciate everyone for doing all the hard work to get here. So with that being said, we're gonna start with our roll call. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, trustee-
Turn your mic on, please, sir.
Is it?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
These are the same mics. These are the same, the same mics.
John, I have no excuse.
I know it looks different, but they're the same, which means we know John's gonna need some help getting it turned on. Debbie, that's your job. Okay, alright.
Okay, trustee Feimster.
Here.
Trustee Frankel.
Here.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Here.
I'm here. Trustee Mayor.
Here.
Trustee Raymond.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
I'm here.
And student representative Chacon.
Here.
Is that, is that how you say it?
Yes.
And on that note, Alex is here for her first official meeting with us after the summer, so thank you. And so what's next is our pledge of allegiance, so since you're here first, we're gonna ask you to lead us in the pledge. Don't worry, you won't do it by yourself, we'll jump in, I promise.
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito, we've missed you!
You did?
We did!
I'm back.
I know!
I don't wanna come every week, but I don't want you to miss it.
Oh, get your mic on, just get your-
I'm having trouble.
Uh-oh.
Maybe that'll work.
There you are. Thank you, sir, you know the routine.
Thank you. My name is John Appolito, I'm a former teacher, I have three kids in the district, I'm a president of Protect Nevada Children. In regards to the social and emotional learning in our schools, specifically the psychological testing and the profiles being conducted in our schools without parental consent via these three tools, the Deveraux Student Strengths Assessment, the SEL Web, and the new American Institute for Researches, and that's on the Nevada School Climate Social and Emotional Survey, it's on the Nevada Department of Ed's website if you haven't seen that one yet, I have a handout here for you. One of our questions was, will parents be notified prior to these psychological assessments being given to their children? We now know the answer is no. Maybe this is why the district won't answer the rest of our questions. We have been asking these questions for about ten months now. Per FOIA, please answer our questions, I have a handout here, I'll give it at the very end, our FOIA request. And this is the second time we've given this, the first time was two months ago. One, will these psychological assessments be given to all students in grades K-8? Two, can parents opt out of these psychological assessments? Three, who will have access to the psychological profiles being created in district schools? Four, will parents be notified who will have access to their children's psychological profiles? And five, how will these profiles affect the future of our children? Washto County School District is one of only a handful of experimental social and emotional school districts in the country, who have invited American Institute for Research and Castle into their schools to create these psychological profiles on children. And the state of Nevada is only one of six states involved in this SEL experiment, social and emotional learning experiment. Initially, there were eight, but too quickly backed out. I understand SEL and probably the psychological assessments were sold as a way to keep track of children, help them, and improve graduation rates, but there's no proof these assessments will do anything other than give third-party access to information about our children, some would object to. My two questions to you, I have three kids, I'll protect my three kids. My two questions to you is, one, don't parents deserve to know all the facts prior to giving their children the DESA, SEL Web, or the Nevada School Climate SEL Survey? And two, as a trustee, are you doing your job to protect the 64,000 children in the district who aren't named Appolito? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome. Maybe someday you guys will answer our questions.
Mr. Appolito, your time is up, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, I know that.
Um, JJ, do we have any more public comment?
Charles Teachout.
Teachout? Did I get that right, sir? Teachout?
Yes, you did.
Teachout, welcome, Mr. Teachout, you have three minutes, sir.
I am a former teacher. Oh, I'm sorry. Alright. I am a former teacher of the district in music, which gives me a deep, deep interest in the emotional health of our children in this district. And my subject is to support what John has said, however, I do believe, and state as emphatically as I can, that the fine arts are the greatest guarantee of the social and emotional learning of our children, they're equalizers. You don't, you don't find one type of child in the arts, you find them all. And that's what we're trying to do as music educators and art educators, and, oh my gosh, athletics and physical education, I have to support as well. However, however, I am absolutely enthralled, or maybe that's not the right word, but frightened by the degree to which our district is collecting data and doing so without the consent of our parents. I think we need, particularly at this time of our history in this state and this country, to promote public trust. Those of you in position of public authority should do everything you can to support our parents' confidence in what's going on in the schools. And I suggest that by answering these five questions submitted to you several times by Mr. Appolito, you could take a big step in the right direction and make this emphatic to the public. Make this statement that you are protecting our children, the first, first interest and concern of every board member here. You know, it's interesting, just one last comment, that this is a bipartisan issue. Not many issues that I see are bipartisan, but the American Civil Rights Union is fully involved, and, and those of us who are conservatives are fully involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teachout.
JJ? That's all I have at this time.
Okay, seeing no further public comment, thank you both, you gentlemen, for being here. We will move on with our agenda, on to Agenda Item 1.05, action to adopt the agenda unless there's the desire, if any of my colleagues, to reorder anything, then I will entertain the motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I move the Board of Trustees adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, been moved in second in any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the motion is carried, let the record show that it is unanimous. We'll move on to Agenda Item 2.01, Board Reports, and we will start, let's see, let's start over here to my left at the far, and we will start with Dr. Feimster. Yes, that's you, Dr. Feimster.
Thank you, Madam President. Of course, I'm happy to talk about my experience yesterday at Shaw Middle School. It was absolutely wonderful, and I'm sure everyone has some of the same, can echo the same thoughts that I felt. First of all, I wanna say that the principal, Gina Leonard, was absolutely just probably more excited than the kids, okay? She was all over the place, and it was just great to see her leading that excitement and that, you know, and the learning experience, I mean, she was at the top of it. And the science department was working together, everybody was coordinated, and so nice to be back in the school with students, I just, it just reminds you over and over again that this is what it's all about. And I just wanna give you a statement from Gina, you know, she doesn't know that, I memorized this, she just kept saying over and over again, "I just, I just love this, I'm just so happy, I am just so happy, I just love this job." And you can feel her excitement, and when you can feel that excitement at the top, I gotta tell you, she's gonna have a great year, and those students are just, they're in heaven, so I was just excited to be there, so.
Thank you, Dr. Feimster. Trustee Mayor?
Pass.
Trustee Mayor passes, okay. Trustee Raymond?
Thank you. Just a few things, I guess, to update on, I was able to visit Echo Loader Elementary School last week and see the finished product of a former boiler room that they were able to turn into a third-grade classroom, and there's a video on Facebook and the Washto building site that you can check out and see the finished product, it was great. Attended a meeting last week with, put together by Councilman David Bobzine with the city of Reno, just to talk a little bit more about how the district can, and the city can work together on the Sierra Kids After-School Program for those Washto County Schools, district schools in the city of Reno. And thank you to Chief Lasik, who is really the one that had all the information, but I was able to sit there and nod my head, so. And then attended the Debt Management Committee meeting, and thank you to our CFO, Tom Suzinski, who again, really came with all the information, and I just got to sit there and nod my head. But I'm learning, so. And then probably the highlight, I guess, was yesterday, being able to get up to Incline Village for the first day of school at Incline High School and Incline Elementary School, and got to watch the eclipse from the Incline High School football field, which was really cool, and the kids were all excited for the first day and the eclipse, probably a day they won't forget. And then on our way back down, stopped at Marvin Piccolo and saw the incredible work they've done there over the summer to revitalize that building, so it was a good week, couple weeks.
Thank you, trustee Raymond. Clerk Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Couple days ago, I attended the Governor's Conference on Business, it was held at the Sparks Nugget, and of course, the focus was business, but there was also a lot of discussion about the importance of education, K-12 and higher education, and all the trades, and how we all work together to prepare young people to enter the workforce, or go off to the military, or do whatever, so there's just a lot of great discussion about that. And of course, all the vendors had all their stuff, and the school district was there, TMCC, UNR, I mean, there's a lot of people there, so it was just really, really neat to see. And then also, I got to film my trustee video, the second part, where they wanna go into a school with a trustee, and so of course, I picked my son's school, my son's classroom, so that was cool, because the students were just super excited when all these camera people showed up, and then we explained to them what it was for, and they thought that was interesting, and when I mentioned that this video eventually would be on YouTube, their eyes just lit up, and they were all excited that they were gonna be in a video with people that people could like and comment on, but it was just really neat, it was really neat to see these students in action, and we took turns, I read to the students, and the students read to me, and they were really into it, so it was just, it was a fun event, and it was neat to meet my son and his classmates.
Alright, thank you, Clerk Kelly. We're just gonna keep moving around this way, Vice President Simon Holland.
Alright, thank you, Madam President. I too got to be in a video for the WCSDbuilding.com at Piccolo School, and that was wonderful to see all the improvements there, and then was back there yesterday with Superintendent and others, and trustee Raymond and others, to have their first day of school, and got to be with the kids at lunchtime, and the principal is absolutely beside himself, Matt is beside himself about the improvements there. I attended the EDON Board Meeting as representative of the school district, and there's a lot of discussion about their strategic plan and their metrics, and there's a lot of interest in career technical education and how we can partner with EDON, so that was a very productive meeting to attend. I, along with all the other trustees, that we had our work session this weekend, and I just, I really wanna thank the staff, and I really wanna thank the other trustees for what I thought was a really productive day, so really appreciate everybody doing that. And then, oh, and I did a Facebook Live for the Ed Alliance for the Run for Education, which was unnerving to do Facebook Live, but we did one, we did one the first day of school too at Dilworth, so I'm getting my sea legs on that. And then last night, not so related to the school district, but it became related to the school district, I helped to emcee the Tahoe Fund Annual Dinner up at Lake Tahoe, and Renown was a sponsor of that dinner, and I had an opportunity to talk to some of the officials from Renown, and I did mention to Dr. McNeil and Deborah Barstorf an idea that, that project that Renown is doing, the 23 and Me in Renown and DRI, is right here in our hometown, and it's, and it's the first of its kind in the world, and I mentioned to them, perhaps there's a way we can have some sort of science curriculum that is involved with that project, and the Renown officials were quite excited about that idea, that that could in fact become an international model, as their project of doing that research with genetic testing and environmental factors, and then medical records moves forward to have some of our AP Science kids included in that and develop a curriculum could be really cool, so just wanted to share that.
You're very cool. Thank you, Vice President Holland. Trustee Frankel?
Thank you, President Taylor. Last two weeks have been extremely busy, I have had many, many constituent conversations and meetings, and with by constituents, I mean everyone from local community groups, going to the Save the Wild Creek meeting, and actually spending, spending the meeting there, listening to their concerns. I have met with a number of other local elected officials, the Sparks and the Reno City Councils, and just got back from Carson City, having some conversations with state officials. So I've been talking to a lot of people about many different things. I do wanna thank the staff for a number of pieces of support for a couple of those meetings, one I had with the president of TMCC, Karen Hilgerson, about CTE and the signature, our signature, or our technical pathways, hang on, TMCC High School at ATC, I've gotta get it right, I know I've gotta get the name right, so I have had, I had a, and we're talking about ways that we can strengthen that program and collaborate effectively together. In addition, I attended on behalf of the board, I'm a representative to the Regional Planning Governing Board, we had a meeting in the last two weeks, and right now, the board is focused on the regional plan update, which is an update they do every five years, and it's a very significant process, bringing all the jurisdictions together to think about the direction for regional planning in the next few years. Another area of focus for the Regional Planning Governing Board is affordable housing, and so the board and Truckee Meadows Regional Planning are doing a lot of work with the different housing consortium and looking at that question. In fact, there is a special meeting that we're having with the Regional Planning Commission on Thursday to have more conversation about that. So that role is, is very busy and also extremely worthwhile, so I'll be bringing more information back about that. But the most fun I had was yesterday, when I got, I decided I needed to go out to Natchez, which is one of the schools that's dear to my heart, for its first day, and they started late because of some repairs, and they have a new carpet and new paint, they have new technology, as the new principal, actually, brand-new principal, it was her first day as well, Gia Marcini, who came as assistant principal from Sun Valley, she was my daughter's sixth-grade teacher at Dipoli Middle School, so I've known Gia a long time, and what I really loved about watching her get the day started, and sitting to have breakfast with the kids, and listening to her talk with, she wanted to have a special conversation with the fifth and sixth graders, to really talk to them about what leadership means, and their example to the other students in the school. She also, I heard a lot about what she's done to build the team, there's a lot of change and transition in that school, and the big focus for all of them right now is building relationships with each other, with the community, and with the students, and I think that her leadership is quite exceptional in getting that started. And yes, I also got to be out there to watch the eclipse, and that was so much fun to be in that playground with those kids, watching the eclipse. I do wanna shout out, and I'm not sure who to thank, Tracy, and maybe you can address this when you do your report, who was the person or the group of people who were the ones that got the eyeglasses out to all the schools? Because I think that was a monumental coordination, coordinated effort, and I wanna thank, if it was Debbie or the STEM Coordinator, I don't know who it was, if you wanna tell-
It is the academics that I have, Debbie, there's a couple of them.
Okay. Well, and I wanna say thank you, because I know that around the district, all the students were able to watch the eclipse safely because of having those glasses. And the thing, the final thing I wanna share about that was the lesson I got from a first grader, when I talked to him about, well, what are you, what is happening up there in the sky? So he had a friend, and he said, you know, Joe's gonna stand here, you, he is, he is the sun, and then he grabbed me, and he said, "You are the moon," and he put me between him and Joe, and he said, "Now I can't see Joe." And I thought that that was a, I just, a first grader, a first grader, I was so impressed, because obviously, they had been talking about it, and they understood already, their first day, they understood what was happening, and already understood this, a little bit of the science behind the big event yesterday. So I was really honored to be out there, and again, thank you to the staff for making that possible for our kids to really, really appreciate this significant event.
Thank you, trustee Frankel. And then your first day here, we'd love to hear, I know you guys just started, I don't know if the Student Advisory Board's been up to anything yet, but we'd love to hear whatever that might be, Alex.
So the Student Advisory Council is meeting next week, and so I'm not sure if you all know what my focus is for this upcoming year, but it's to, to pay closer attention to the cyberbullying that's occurring within this district, and the negative implications that are coming with it, and so next week, I'm gonna be discussing that goal, and we're gonna do like a team bonding type of thing, where we're gonna make vision boards of like what each individual like wants to focus on through like cyberbullying, I guess, so that way, yeah, we can all bond and figure out what we all would like to accomplish this upcoming year.
Outstanding, well, we look forward to hearing more about that, and you couldn't pick a more important or timely topic either than cyberbullying. For me, a really brief, just again, to co-sign, I guess I should say, on what trustee Holland said, thank you for everyone that did all the work to put the retreat together, there were some really short windows, and it was right around the beginning of school, and staff just really worked hard. Thank you to our chief of staff, Lasik, and deputy superintendent McNeil, that got all your staff lined up and all those things, it was a lot, it was a lot of work, but it was a lot of great work, and certainly for all of our colleagues that spent the day there, and spent the extra workday for our staff, so thank you, Superintendent Davis. And then I too was just gonna congratulate the district on, I had so many positive community comments about how great it was that the district supplied the glasses for the kids, and we got glasses that came from the same people the planetarium bought theirs from, so we knew the glasses were good, we weren't involved in that, you know, some of those unfortunate instances when they weren't, and so really, I mean, our kids and many of us, I got, I thought it was really cool. It actually surprised me how cool I thought it was. It really did, like, "Yeah, this is pretty cool." But it was just, just what a fantastic hands-on learning opportunity, we actually got at least one, and one email, and some of you may have seen that, just congratulating us. And the interesting thing, it was, it was a person that actually wrote us and complained about something last year, and he wrote back and said, "I know I complained last year, but this year I wanna give you kudos for that really hands-on opportunity for our kids." So for everyone, for anyone who did it, and everyone involved in it, thank you very much, and thank you for making sure we could all be a part of it, 'cause it was pretty cool. It was pretty cool. Alright, that's it for the board, how about you, Superintendent Davis?
So it's been a busy two weeks, as you know, two weeks ago, we started the first day of kindergarten, which was amazing, and we tried to tweet out and put lots of pictures up, and we know that the downtown Reno Rotary is really, really active in supporting us, and so I went to the Rotary luncheon, and so when they ring the bell at Rotary, they donate money. So somehow, somebody stood up and says, "Well, if the superintendent will visit my grandson, I'm gonna donate $100," right? Well, it took off like fire, so I had a list of visits, and I made every one of them, so the Rotarians will be happy to donate the money, but it was pretty cool to go visit their kids or their grandkids and say, "Hey, this is your grandma, grandma, and we're taking this picture," so it was really exciting to add to my schedule. And then, of course, we had the first day of school at Incline, Piccolo, and Natchez, and thank you trustee Frankel for getting to Natchez, because we were at Piccolo and Incline, but I did go to Natchez Open House, which was the Thursday previous, and I just wanna thank Elder Rinalda James, who, it's an intricate community and their customs, and just so powerful how we all engage together, and she did her blessing over the community, and every kid got a backpack, the work that's being done in equity and diversity, so I wanna thank the area superintendents, Troy for being out there, tons of district people out there supporting, so a really good positive vibe. I would like to say, at Incline, we really did have fun on the football field, even though there are no bears. But what was really cool at the elementary school is trustee Malina's not talking about her dance moves, when we had to dance to the sun, the moon, and earth, and understand the eclipse, so there was some great stuff happening in the schools. Let's see, what you have in front of you, by the way, I provided you with Innovations' first CD, they published this summer, so the little green, I don't have one, so can I borrow this for a second? Thank you, Scott. So this was their first CD of songs that they published, and one for every board member. And then, can I use that? I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you, trustee Kelly. This probably doesn't show up anywhere in a plan, but one of our big initiatives around not being reactive for our high school kids and being proactive, so we do the whole data sheet, we do the whole invitation, and Ben in the Office of Accountability has been ahead of this, and so this year, in good fashion, we kicked off again with the special invitation to all our freshmen, and we will do those freshman visits like we did last year, they have their, this year's magnet is different from last year's, and they have the QAR, which gives the parents all the information, and then we will be sending out the data sheets to the rest of the high school kids, where are you at, what do you need, how can we help you, where to get what, so it's not parents going online and like, we can't find stuff, we really put stuff in their hands, and so we're really excited. So thank you, Ben, for taking over that project, and things are really going well, good vibe, everybody's happy, thank you all for participating in these Facebook Lives and doing some stuff, but we've really been getting a lot of hits in the community around the work and our transparency, so we'll keep doing some of those activities. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis, and thank you to our Student Advisory Council representative and our trustees, a lot of, a lot of great work happening in the community, the more we can connect with the community, I think it's better, it's really better, so. Alright, so we'll move on in our agenda to Agenda Item 3.01, this is our consent items, so unless there is a desire to pull something forward or out, I will, looking for, to entertain a motion, before the motion, do you have any public comment on any of these? No, we don't, okay. Entertaining motion to approve consent Agenda Items 3.02 through 3.08.
Move approval.
The motion, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and any further, any discussion at all? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposition? Alright, the motion is carried, and let the record show, it is unanimous, it is unanimous. And now we're dropped down to Agenda Item 4.01, and this is discussion and preliminary approval of the proposed revision, this is for Board Policy 9165, Legal Counsel. This one will include additional language related to appeals of litigation and, and upon approval, should we approve it today, it will initiate the 13-day public review period, just as a reminder to my colleagues, the public review period used to be 15 days, now it's 13 days, which certainly allows for it to come back prior to our next meeting, and I believe that's why that dropped. So before us, we see our representative chief general counsel, Mr. Rumbardle.
Thank you, Madam President, Superintendent, members of the board. As we discussed, I think a week ago, maybe two weeks ago, this is pursuant to a case that came out by the Nevada Supreme Court in June of this year, on June 29th, the Supreme Court held that the decision to appeal is one that should be made by the client in the past, most public entities, the lawyer would make that decision, and then brief their board afterward. And the court said that that's not okay, so what, we reached out to other public body or other public agencies, and what they're doing is passing a policy similar to this, saying that the board is basically giving that authority to, in our case, the superintendent, some places are going to the county manager, city manager, et cetera. As you may recall, at the policy meeting, trustee Holland asked for a slight amendment, which asked that we brief the board ahead of time before filing an appeal, and so we put that language in there. I think it meets what is desired, if it doesn't, we'd be obviously happy to change it, we just feel that this is important because of, as I expressed at the last meeting, the policy, or excuse me, the time to appeal is short, and so it's just, it's difficult for our office to get to a meeting, get an agenda together, and the other disadvantages, sometimes you have to reveal your strategy, and we prefer not to do that, obviously, we wanna keep our strategy as close to the vest as possible, so we see that as the advantage of this policy, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from our colleagues? I know we do have public comment on this agenda item, so why don't we hear that first, and we'll see if we have any questions from the table.
John Appolito?
Mr. Appolito, welcome, sir.
Got it. Thank you. I did have a question. The questions that I just read, those were submitted as a FOIA on 6/27/17 to the attorney. And he still hasn't responded, nor have the Board members that were here to our five questions, our five FOIA questions. The ones that I read a few minutes ago, I'd be glad to read them again if you want. But if something tells me you don't really want to hear them again, you've been hearing them for 10 months, and you haven't answered them yet. The attorney should be doing this. This is something, it's a FOIA request. It was submitted. If it's on the wrong form, please let me know. I'll do it on a different form. I'll email them to you again. And this is something that the attorney should be taking care of. And for some reason, he's...
Thank you, Mr. Appolito. That comment, I hear you, is not related to the question as before the Board at this time on the Agenda. But we appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir.
May I weigh in? I won't comment because it is off the Agenda, but I'll be happy to comment a public comment because I'm not going to be disparaged and not be able to respond.
We'll certainly allow you. It's public comment times. We'll certainly allow that, Mr. Rombardo.
Are there any questions?
Any questions regarding this? I mean, there can be, we'll have that public comment when we do that towards the end of the meeting. Any other comments or questions from the Board? If not, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
Move approval.
Yes, trustee mayor? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. I heard a second coming from over here somewhere. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. Let the record show, it is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Rombardo. We'll drop down now to Agenda Item 4.02. This is Discussion and Preliminary Approval of the Proposed Revision. This is Board Policy 7110 regarding the naming of schools and other district facilities, including language related to naming recommendations by the Superintendent. And again, should this receive approval today, then it will initiate the 13-day public review period. This is for action. And before us, we see Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer Irene Payne, Mr. Riley Sutton, who's our Public Relations Specialist, and Chief of Staff David Lazik. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. For the record, Irene Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer for the school district. So, we presented this policy, which is Board Policy 7110, Naming of Schools and Other District Facilities, to the Board Policy Committee a few weeks ago, a month ago. As a result of the conversation we had at that meeting, we made some changes. And now, we're back in front of the full Board to ask for your approval of this policy.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. For those of us who are present, I believe it was the August 1st policy meeting. Now, you can see in the staff report and in the drafts before us. I believe those concerns that we share are reflective appropriately. Please weigh in if you think otherwise. If not, and I don't see any public comment on this, so I will entertain a motion for approval at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, seeing no discussion? There is some discussion, yes. Trustee Feimster? It's okay. Just get your mic on. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I thought we had discussed not sending the names to the Superintendent under, let's see, 5.1 or V1 or whatever, that it would stay with the committee so that the Superintendent would not have to be in the middle of the process. Or maybe someone could shed light on it for me. There was a discussion around that.
Mm-hmm. There was a discussion. Staff, you want to weigh in on that? I think, if I may, Trustee Feimster, I think the question that came before us was the Superintendent making a recommendation and whether or not it goes to the committee or if it comes straight to us.
Right.
And then, at that time, we determined that all naming recommendations should go to the committee?
Yeah.
Right? Yes, Trustee Holland?
If I might, yes. And I recall that. And thanks, thanks for raising that issue. We did talk about not putting the Superintendent in the position of directly circumventing the committee. And so, it does say under 2B, the committee shall consider potential names and make recommendations to the Board of Trustees. So, I think that whole issue was resolved, but defer to staff. I think it's resolved to your satisfaction, but if not...
David Lazik, Chief of Staff, for the record. Yes, we did have a discussion about removing the Superintendent from the process. So, it is removed in the revised. So, perhaps you might have the original version instead of the... Sorry about that.
That's okay. That's okay.
All right.
You're right.
So, it is removed.
No, it's good to clarify that, though, because that was an important discussion that we had. So...
Yeah. I just had a different version. But thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, we have two different drafts in front of us. One up there. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? So, we do have a motion on the floor for approval, and it has been seconded. Further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, seeing none. The motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Thank you very much to our staff. We're going to go now to Agenda Item 3.02. I mean, 4.03, you know, that's what I meant. Stay with me. Sort of, sort of, you know, stay with me.
It's a dyslexic thing.
Yeah, stay with me. School just started. So, this is for the proposed adoption of Board Policy 5150, Student Freedom of Expression, Freedom of Speech, and the Right to Assemble. So, this certainly means, we certainly would love for you to weigh in on this, Alex, when we get a chance, which includes language regarding the rights and responsibilities of students, of students related to student publications. And upon approval, should we approve it, initiates a 13-day public review period. And before us, we see Dr. Christian McNeil. We see Chief Academic Officer, Deborah Deirdoff. And then, we also see Beerdorf. And then, we also see our Chief of Staff, Beersdorf.
I was going to...
I call her Debbie. I call her Debbie. So...
Good afternoon, President Taylor, Superintendent Davis, members of the Board. We are here to present the revised policy that we brought to the Board Policy Meeting back on August 1st, 2017. We believe we have been able to capture all of the Board members' requested revisions, including trustee mayor's. So, if you take a look at Section 2E under Publications as well as Definitions, and we are open to any questions or comments, as we would like to make the recommendation to move forward with the 13-day posting.
Yes, trustee Raymond?
Thank you. I just have one quick question. When it goes out for this 13-day public review, and the notes, it mentioned that some of the government classes looked over this last year, was it? Is there any way to get it back out to them for the 13-day window and get feedback from them? Or is...
I think we can do that. Yeah.
Just be interesting for them to be part of the process as much as anything else, I think. So, thank you.
Good point.
Thank you, trustee Raymond. That'd be great. Any comments on this at all? I know you guys had a chance to weigh in as well, last semester, I believe. Did you see, is captured? Or do you think anything's missing in here that's important?
I do not think so. No.
Okay, good. Well, that's important. You're here, so we want to make sure that we hear your voice.
Yeah.
Okay. So, thank you. Other comments or questions from the table? No public comment on this one, Ms. JJ? Okay. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion at this time, if that's the pleasure of the Board.
I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to Board Policy 5150, Student Freedom of Expression, Freedom of Speech, and the Right to Assembly, and initiates the 13-day public review period.
Thank you, trustee Frankel. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion? Oh, yes, discussion. Yes, there's a light. Okay.
I just, I just want to thank the staff and everyone for developing this policy because it is such an important time in our country's history that we grapple with these issues of freedom of speech. There is no perfect solution to how we balance the rights of individuals and the rights of groups in terms of their freedom of speech. But it is so intrinsic to the Constitution of the United States. And I just, I'm grateful that the district is taking this very difficult step. And we may not be perfect, but we have come up with, I think, a great policy. So, thank you all for that.
And a lot of the credit goes to our policy coordinator, Lisa Scurry, who does a wonderful job as far as watchdogging on these types of issues.
Thank you for that, Lisa. It's called job security, Ms. Scurry, job security. No, but thank you for your work. You really make sure that we're involved in important things. And thank you for those comments, Trustee Holland. Who knew where we're going to be, where we are in the history of our country now. But it makes us look pretty smart. So, with this one and the next one. Any further discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Beersdorf. I've been working on it. I've probably jacked her name up so many times. I am so sorry. I am so sorry. I am so sorry. Yes, yes. Nothing but love for you, Deb. Nothing but love. Okay, now, on to Agenda Item, where we now, 4.04. 4.04. This is Discussion and Possible Action. Just to amend the contract with Sawyer Education Consulting and ON Strategy to replace Sawyer Education Consulting with the Human Resources Connection, a consultant of equal capabilities as provided by ON Strategy, to conduct the Superintendent devaluation for the 2016-17 school year and increase the amount of the contract from $16,000 to $19,500. And I am the presenter, so I will present from here and then certainly entertain any questions and receive any public comment if there will be some. Just for point of information, Ms. Lynn Sawyer of Sawyer Education Consulting is going to be unable to, is unable to fulfill her end of that contract. And as customary, when we have a contract that's agreed and that's in a partnership, if anybody on the contract is replaced, certainly, we want to make sure they're replaced with someone of equal capabilities. And then, that means the contract will get amended. And ON Strategy, who is the other partner in that contract, reached out and stayed within those that we had already reviewed, who had submitted proposals, and formed a partnership with the Human Resources Connection to jump in. The process had already begun. And so, the team from HRC, Human Resources Connection, agreed to jump in and pick it up from where it was. And so, hence, a little bit of the increase in the cost of jumping in midstream and then just picking up and therefore not changing our timeline or any of those things that we've already approved at a Board meeting. So, it keeps us on track, and we didn't have to pull anything back in. And so, my request to my colleagues is to approve this amended contract along with the amended amount. And certainly, we'll entertain any questions anybody has at this time. Put it in my way. Trustee Mayor?
Move for approval.
Thank you, trustee mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. Let the record show, it is unanimous. It is unanimous. And now, we are down to closing items. Before we go to our final public comment, we're going to say, do we have any future Agenda Item requests from any of our colleagues around the table at this time?
Well, you did have them. I don't remember. I'll have to get it later.
Okay. Well, we'll meet again. So, it'll come back up. Okay. All right, seeing none. We do have some public comment. JJ, if you would.
Neora Marder.
Thank you, JJ. So, in response to Mr. Appolito, I am looking at an email dated October 29th that responds to his FOIA request. And with regard to questions, the law doesn't require us to answer questions. We provide documents. So, we did. And that's the facts. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rombardo. Ms. Batjelder, any further public comment? I thought I saw a card come over.
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito, welcome, sir. You know the routine.
Thank you. Yeah, our questions are pretty simple. I only spent one week in law school. And one of the things I determined during that week was the world had too many lawyers already. So, I ended up becoming a teacher a year or two after that. But our questions are very relevant to parents. Maybe legally, Mr. Rombardo can get around answering them. Maybe the Board doesn't care about our questions. But our questions are these. One, will these psychological assessments be given to all students in grades K-8? That's a simple question to answer. It's yes or no. Two, can parents opt out of these psychological assessments? That's a yes or no question. Three, who will have access to the psychological profiles being created in district schools? That should be a simple question to answer. Something tells me it might not be, though. Four, will parents be notified who will have access to their children's psychological profiles? Maybe Mr. Rombardo can't answer that question, but that question is extremely important. This is going to negatively impact a bunch of kids in our schools. Not mine, because mine won't be doing it. But the other 64,000 kids that you guys are supposed to be looking after, this is going to negatively impact some of those kids. And five, how will these profiles affect the future of our students? Probably, nobody on this Board can answer that. Maybe a person or two at AIR, American Institute for Research, that's the Eugenics people, you remember them, maybe a couple people at Castle. But we can't answer those questions. Just that alone should be enough reason not to be doing this stuff in schools without parental consent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito. Superintendent Davis?
I just want to...
Want a clarification?
Point of clarification that our chief student support officer, I mean, our chief schools officer, Dr. Paul Lamaca, did meet with Mr. Appolito and answer his questions. And also, in an email that was sent, his initial questions were responded to by the Chief of Staff Lazik.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Davis. Any other public comment, Ms. Batjelder? Okay, seeing none, then probably the shortest Board meeting I've ever been involved in. All right, our next meeting, colleagues, September 12th at 2:00 PM, right here in our newly refurbished Board Conference Room. Thank you, everybody. Our meeting is adjourned.